All right, Easter, we've taken a different path. That once or twice during the year. That's the monster in the household stuff.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We got this.
All right, we'll go ahead and get started with the Little Rock Planning Commission for the month of June 2023. Appreciate everyone being here tonight. We will hold on just a second. Okay, all right, we will start with a roll call and the finding of a quorum. And is that you, Mr. Thrower?
Yes, sir, Chairman. This is roll call vote for the Little Rock Planning Commission meeting for July 8th, 2023. Brown?
Here.
Art?
Here.
Haynes?
Here.
Latur?
Here.
McDonald?
Here.
Thomas?
Here.
Bickers?
Present.
Vogel?
Here.
Whitaker? Commissioner Whitaker? We have a quorum.
Okay, we do have eight members present by my account, so. All right, before we get into our agenda tonight and before we approve the minutes of last month's meeting, we do have the order of business of electing a vice chair. So at this point, I will throw that out to the commissioners and see if someone would like to nominate a vice chair for the planning commission. Nominate Jimmy Brown. We have a nomination of Jimmy Brown. Anyone else?
I second Jimmy Brown.
I nominate Michael Bickers.
We have a nomination of Michael Bickers.
I second the nomination for Michael Bickers.
Okay. Two for Mr. Brown, two for Mr. Bicker. Those are nominations in seconds, so. Anyone else? We close nominations. All right. I am at a loss as to how we do this. I've been here before when we've nominated officers, but don't quite remember how we do it. So do we just throw their name out and let everyone? Or do we have a roll call and let everyone vote on either Mr. Brown or Mr. Bickers?
You could do it that way, yes.
Okay, all right. That may be the easiest way to do it, and then whoever gets the most votes. Okay, let's have a roll call, and when your name is called, respond with either Brown or Bickers.
Brown?
I'm staying.
Art?
Brown.
Haynes?
Bickers.
Latur?
Tough choice, but I'll go with Vicker. I'll go with Brown.
McDonald?
Bickers?
Thomas?
Bickers.
Bickers?
Yes, Bickers.
Yeah, I think, yes, Mr. Bickers, you vote for yourself?
Yes.
Yes, he's trying to get online here, so.
Yes, sir. Vogel?
Bickers.
Anybody who goes out? We have two for Brown and five.
Okay.
For Vickers. Vickers is elected vice chair.
All right.
Good deal.
Whether you wanted it or not, Michael. Let's go ahead and you've had the opportunity to review the minutes, hopefully, so I would entertain a motion to approve the May 11th, 2023 minutes of Little Rock Planning Commission meeting.
Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes. All readings?
We have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, roll call vote.
Brown?
Yes.
Art?
Yes.
Haynes?
Yes.
Latur?
Yes.
McDonald?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Bickers?
Yes.
Vogel?
Yes.
And Whitaker? Commissioner Whitaker is still absent. The main minutes have been approved.
Okay, great. Presentation of the consent agenda, and we do, so I am showing that items nine, 12, and 14 will come off the consent agenda. Is that what?
That is correct.
With what you've got, based on the cards that are filled out. Okay, Mr. Moore.
Following is a consent agenda, Little Rock Planning Commission, meeting of June 8th, 2023. You have two items on consent withdrawal. First is item D, file number Z9766, Moreno Event Center, PCD, 13,008 West Markham Street. The applicant submitted a letter to staff requesting this application be withdrawn without prejudice. Staff supports that request. Item eight, Z9798, Burrito Accessory Dwelling, CUP, 4306 Foster Street. On May 18th, the applicant submitted a letter requesting this item be withdrawn. Staff supports that request. Next group of items are on consent deferral. Item A, Z9760, Reading Properties, Short Term Rental, PCD, 1117 Kavanaugh Boulevard. The applicant submitted a letter to staff on May 15th requesting this application be deferred to the September 14th agenda. Staff supports that request. Item B, Z9761 McGrath 1, Short Term Rental, PCD, 407 North Ambeurin Street. The applicant submitted a letter to staff on May 15th requesting this application be deferred to the September 14th agenda. Staff supports that request. Item C, Z9762 McGrath 2, Short Term Rental, PCD, 710 Beechwood Street. The applicant submitted a letter to staff on May 15th requesting this application be deferred to the September 14th agenda. Staff supports that request. Item E, Z9769 Socio's LLC, Short Term Rental, PDC, 4401, 4405 Lee Avenue. On May 15th, the applicant submitted a, requested that this item be deferred to the August 10th agenda. Staff supports that request. Item F, Z9772 Artist Short Term Rental, PDC, 48 Dartmouth Drive. The applicant failed to send the notifications to surrounding property owners as required. Staff recommends the application be deferred to the July 13th agenda. Item G, Hillcrest Design Overlay District Amendment. Staff recommends this item be deferred to the July 13th agenda. Item I, S1941, Little West Edition, Preliminary Platte, 7404 Mapleville Pike. The applicant failed to send the notifications to surrounding property owners as required. Staff recommends this application be deferred to the July 13th agenda. Item J, Z8629D Storage Space LLC, CUP, 102 South Rodney Param Road. The applicant failed to send the notifications to surrounding property owners as required. Staff recommends this application be deferred to the July 13th agenda. Item K, Z9782 Dunick Mixed Use PCD, 6024 Stagecoach Road. The applicant failed to send notifications to surrounding property owners as required. Staff recommends this application be deferred to the July 13th agenda. Item four, Z2255C Jayhook Towing, CUP, 5809 South University Avenue. The applicant submitted a letter to staff on May 19th requesting this application be deferred to the July 13th agenda. Staff supports that request. Item five, Z9788 Loveless Daycare, CUP, 8704 Omen Road. The applicant failed to send notifications to surrounding property owners as required. Staff recommends this item, this application be deferred to the July 13th agenda. And item 17, Z9787 Thomas Short Term Rental, PDC, 300 Springwood Drive. The applicant submitted a letter to staff on May 25th requesting this application be deferred to the July 13th agenda. Staff supports that request. Next are the items on consent approval. Item number one, S867W9, lots 1A through 3B, tract 1, Chenal Valley, Preliminary Platte, east side of Chenal Parkway, north of Rawling Road. Staff recommends approval of the requested preliminary plats subject to compliance with the comments and conditions noted in paragraph D and E and the staff analysis of the agenda staff report. Item two, S867X9, lot 6A through 7B, tract 1, Chenal Valley, Preliminary Platte, north side of Rawling Road at Rawling Circle. Staff recommends approval of the requested preliminary plats subject to compliance with the comments and conditions noted in paragraph D and E and the staff analysis of the agenda staff report. Item three, S867Y9, lots 2R through 6, tract 6, Chenal Valley, Preliminary Platte, northwest corner of Rawling Road and Chenal Valley Drive. Staff recommends approval of the requested preliminary plats subject to compliance with the comments and conditions noted in paragraphs D and E and the staff analysis of the agenda staff report. Item six, Z9794 Arium Development Duplexes, CUP, 1024 South Woodrow Street. Staff recommends approval of the requested CUP subject to compliance with the comments and conditions outlined in paragraph D and E and the staff analysis of the agenda staff report. Item seven, Z9797, J and R Properties Accessory Dwelling, CUP, 106 Ridgeway Drive. Staff recommends approval of the requested CUP subject to compliance with the comments and conditions outlined in paragraph E and the staff analysis of the agenda staff report. Item 10, Z6748F Rezoning from C1 to C3, 1208 Bowman Road. Staff recommends approval of the requested C3 rezoning. Item 11, Z9789, a rezoning from R3 to R4, 1021, 1023 South Maple Street. Staff recommends approval of the requested R4 rezoning. Item 13, Z9791, a rezoning from R3 to R4, 2119 South Martin Street. Staff recommends approval of the requested R4 rezoning. Item 15, Z9796, a rezoning from C3 to C4, northeast corner of Production Drive and Distribution Drive. Staff recommends approval of this C4 rezoning. Item 16, Z8959B Valerie Place, PDR, 14309, 14617 Canis Road. Staff recommends approval of the requested PDR zoning subject to compliance with the comments and conditions outlined in paragraph D, E, and F and the staff analysis of the agenda staff report. Item 18, Z9800, Little Rock Micro Village, Micro Home Village, CUP, 3405, 3511 Roosevelt Road. Staff recommends approval of the requested CUP subject to comply, comments and conditions outlined in paragraph D and E and the staff analysis of the agenda staff report. Item 19, A344 National Properties Holdings Annexation, west of Canis Road, south of Canis Ridge Road, 14508 Canis Road. Staff recommends approval. Item 20, A345 Potlatch Deltic Wildwood Creek Annexation between Denny and Canis Road, south of 21201 Denny Road. Staff recommends approval. Item 21, A346 Potlatch Deltic Morgan Cemetery Annexation between Morgan Cemetery Road and Highway 10, west of Joe T. Robinson Schools. Staff recommends approval. And item 22, Zoning Ordinance Amendment for R4 Zoning. Staff recommends approval of the proposed zoning ordinance amendments. That concludes the consent agenda.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Moore. Longer consent agendas make for shorter planning commission meetings, so. All right, you've heard the reading of the consent agenda. Do we have a motion for approval?
Motion for approval?
So moved by Director Brown or Commissioner Brown. Do we have a second?
Second.
A motion and a second. Roll call vote, Mr. Thrower.
Brown?
Yes.
Art?
Yes.
Haynes?
Yes.
Latur?
Yes.
McDonald?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Bickers?
Yes.
Vogel?
Yes.
Whitaker? Consent agenda has been approved.
Okay, great. If your item was on that consent agenda, it has been dealt with, and you're welcome to stay if you wish, but most people leave. Okay, we have four items for our regular agenda, and Mr. Moore, I think what I want to do, since this has been deferred a couple of times, and I think the majority of folks in the audience may be here for item H. Let's go ahead and deal with item H, since it was on the regular agenda. So we'll have a reading, if you don't mind, for item H dash, Z dash, 5817 dash L, the Cantrell West Retail Center.
Chairman Hart, before we do that, we do have item H, nine, 12, and 14 on regular. You are down to eight commissioners. Do you want to offer the deferral to the rest of the items? Or do you want to do that as they come up, or?
Let's, let's do that as, as we come up, yeah, because we're not, not offering that on this one, correct? On item H. Okay, so we're going to deal with item H first, which is presented on the regular agenda, which is on the handout when you came in, and is the applicant present for item H, the Cantrell West Retail Center?
Just give a staff report.
Oh, I'm sorry, a staff report first. You threw me off there, Mike.
That's okay. Sorry about that. Item H, file number Z5817L, Cantrell West Retail Center, PCD, 15122 Cantrell Road. The applicant proposes to rezone this 3.8 acre property from PDO and R2 to PCD, probably located at the northeast corner of Cantrell Road and Rumel Road. The rezoning is to allow future retail development with a main retail structure and an auto service center structure. The applicant is proposing a 28,026 square foot commercial retail structure to be located within the northern portion of the property, and a 6,620 square foot auto service structure to be located within the east central portion of the development. Paved parking and internal access drives will be located along the front sides of each building. Site plan indicates that internal drives will circle the internal parking areas in the south and east portions of the development and accommodate a drive-through window at the west end of the retail center building. The applicant is requesting all 01, 02, 03 permitted and conditional uses as permitted uses for this development. Also, all C1 permitted and conditional uses, with the exception of a small group of uses that they're excluding. And then there's also another small group of uses that they're including as permitted uses, and I'll let the applicant go through those. I believe I have a PowerPoint that addresses that. The applicant notes that hours of operation for the development would be 7:00 AM to 10:00 PM, Monday through Saturday, and 10:00 to 8:00 on Sunday. Section 31210 of the city's zoning ordinance. Section 31210 of the city's zoning ordinance requires for arterial streets 625 feet of frontage for two drives. The applicant has requested a variance from the regulate, from these regulations to allow two drives from an arterial street with lot frontage of less than 625 feet. The lot frontage in this case is around 490 feet. Section 31210 also requires driveway spacing to be 300 feet between drives and minimum spacing of 150 feet from a driveway to a side property line. The applicant is requesting a variance from these regulations to allow the two drives to be separated by approximately 270 feet and the easternmost drive to be approximately 65 feet from the east side property line. Section 36346 of the city zoning ordinance, which is the Highway 10 Design Overlay District, allows ground mounted commercial development signs with a maximum height of 10 feet and maximum area of 100 square feet. All ground mounted signs must be of monument type. The applicant is requesting a variance to have two ground mounted signs for this development and these signs must comply with the DOD standards as far as size and height and type go. The applicant is requesting to construct retaining walls along the north and east property lines. The retaining walls will vary in height to a maximum height of approximately 20 feet. The applicant is proposing to utilize no architectural stone and no terraces with the proposed walls or cut and fill. The applicant is requesting a variance from the provisions of section 29190 for the walls. The applicant notes that the land use buffers along the northeast perimeter perimeters will be significantly reduced to accommodate site grading requirements. Section 36521 requires a minimum of 70% of a land use buffer to be undisturbed. The applicant notes that more than 30% of the required buffers in this case will be disturbed and has requested that up to 100% of the land use buffer along the north perimeter be disturbed. Staff does not support the overall proposed development as submitted due to the following issues. Staff believes an emergency access should be provided from Rumel Road. There's no vehicular access available on the north perimeter of the main retail structure to allow for deliveries or emergency vehicle access. Staff cannot support the drive-through area, the design and circulation of the drive-through area at the west end of the retail building due to the fact that a specific use is not known for this section of the building. The C4 auto-related use is too intense for the development and staff does not support the intended retaining wall height along the north property line as proposed.
Okay, thank you very much. Before we have the applicant come up, I was handing a note for those commissioners online. If you're not muted, please mute. It looks like everyone is, but we must be getting a little feedback. Okay, is the applicant present?
How you doing? Jess Griffin, representing the applicant.
Is that mic on there at the podium?
Hello?
Okay, all right.
I'll speak into it closer.
Yeah. Each side will have 20 minutes total, so you can make your presentation now or you can defer until you've heard those who oppose the, the item.
We'd like to hear from everybody that opposes.
Hear from everyone that opposes. Okay. I have, I'll tell you what I'm going to do. I actually have several cards here, but I have of four that support the item and two that oppose. So I'm going to call up first in no particular order Gary Williams. Approach the podium, please, and your name and address and.
Sure. My name is Gray Williams. I hope that's just a bad handwriting on my part.
Well, yeah, I almost said Jerry, but that wouldn't have been right either. So sorry about that.
Okay, no problem. I get that a lot. I'm a near neighbor to the property referenced in this application. And in addition, along with about 100 other people, I have to drive through this intersection every day to go anywhere, work, store, anything else, anywhere else in Little Rock, we have to come through that intersection. And I'm here to represent neighborhood opposition to the application. There would be one other person that represents another portion of the neighborhood. We've been in, in discussions with the developer over a period of several years now culminating in a document that we provided last May. And I sent this to you guys yesterday. I'm not sure if everyone's had a chance to look at it, but that outlined our conditions for support. Those have not been met. I'm going to just keep this brief. I have a lot of data if you want to ask questions later, but in just in the interest of brevity. We were surprised after the meetings and previous discussions that late last year the developer had made some changes to the application and just resubmitted them without any further neighborhood input. Those changes included making the space larger, the developed square footage, about 40% larger than the original application, which was rejected by the board several years ago. The new application, as was mentioned, I think in the staff analysis, also shut off one means of egress that we knew and everyone has been, has known from the beginning to be required by Little Rock Fire Department. That's not contained on this. And it also added an auto repair shop near Cantrell. A little bit of history on that. There's an auto repair shop about two lots over that was developed probably six or seven years ago. And they were required to push their frontage of that particular facility back quite a ways in, Mr. Collins, you may know the exact distance, but it's probably further back from Cantrell than the rear of this property is from Cantrell. Just because of the, you know, traffic circulation issues and, and auto backup that are so, that are associated with an auto repair shop. Among the changes that have been requested by the neighbors that have, that were not included in the current application, one was to reduce the number of Cantrell entrances and exits. As you heard in the application, they're asking for variance to allow two driveways on this property, which we think is already a traffic hazard. And then we also asked for a reduction in the intensity of use and that was reversed. So just some additional factors I want everyone to be aware of, the city board has already denied a less intense application by this developer on this property. This developer has violated previous permits associated with this property for grading and things like that. And we understand that, you know, planning commission staff is recommending denial. We just wish to add our voice to those opposed. And again, I have lots of data and pictures and things if anybody wants to see that, but just in the interest of time and the fact that you guys have heard about a lot of this already, I'm going to defer to Dick Stoker, whoever's next on your list.
Yes, Mr. Stoker. And after Mr. Stoker, I'll ask for any questions or comments from the commissioners.
Yeah. Mr. Chairman, commissioners, I have a handout. This is actually what I believe Gray has sent to you earlier, but I'm not sure that you've had a chance to look at it. We won't discuss this.
I'll pass.
My name is Richard Stoker. I live at 11 Countryside Cove, which is in a subdivision, which is, connects to Rumel, similar to Gray's living area. There are over 55 single family residences in there. As Gray pointed out, we all use Rumel to come and go into the rest of the city. It might help this discussion if we revisit some of the history of this site. Previous proposals to develop the property going back to 2007 and 16 were supportive by neighbors because they agreed with the existing zoning and land use plan. Teziki's Restaurant was later built and there were some, at the time, the condition was set that everything between Teziki's site and Rumel would be less intense business use. Early 2020, Reese Commercial purchased the property. July 2020, applicant submitted Z 5817J. That was to build the three drive-through restaurants. As Gray pointed out, that application was approved by the planning commission and rejected by the Board of Directors. Subsequent to that, Reese Commercial suggested that a small group of local neighbors be identified to work with Reese Commercial and act as liaisons to the larger neighborhoods. I am one of three members of that liaison group. First meeting of that group was in September 2020. Since September 2020, neighborhood representatives have spent many hours in meetings, discussions, and in documenting their concerns and suggestions. Through 2021, discussions between Reese Commercial and the neighborhoods continued, though no definitive agreements were made. The applicant continued to submit revised proposals to the planning commission. In February 2022, planning commission approved application Z 5817K, though PC staff recommended denial. On May 17, 2022, the application on the agenda for presentation to the Board of Directors before discussion, Director Peck moved that the application be referred back to the planning commission. Stated objective in doing this was to work with neighborhoods to develop a less intense business use proposal for the site. On May 31, 2022, neighborhood representatives sent email to Reese Commercial and Planning Commission documenting business uses and conditions that most neighbors could support. That list has been provided to the commissioners. That was just passed out. On July 20, 2022, a meeting was held at the Pankey Community Center chaired by Planning Commission Director Collins, attended by Director Peck, John Reese, and local neighbors. Documents presented by Reese Commercial were the same ones that were referred back to the planning commission by the board. It appeared that the list of business uses and conditions neighbors sent on May 31 had not been reviewed. Director Collins stated that the next step would be for him to work with John Reese to review the neighborhood list. After that review, a follow-up meeting with the neighbors would be scheduled. To date, no follow-up meetings with local neighbors have been scheduled. The next thing the neighbors heard, as Gray mentioned, was that there was a new Z 5817L application submitted to the planning commission. Not only does the revised application not reduce the business activity intensity, it increases the intensity incorporating the auto service center, which is a C4 business defined use. Also increasing the total size of the retail center buildings from 27,000 square feet to over 34,000 square feet. Average square feet per acre is now 9,000. We would expect that if this application is approved by the planning commission, the board would deny it, given that none of the objectives stated by the board when they previously referred it back to the planning commission have been addressed. There are also significant issues with application documentation in Sketch 1. Current application removes the previous connection to Rumel for emergency access. As Gray pointed out, the staff analysis indicates that they believe that that emergency access is still required. Stated in the staff analysis, it says that the retail strip center will be 28,026 square feet. The Sketch 1 notes the size is 23,560. If almost 6,000 additional square feet need to be added to the sketch, I would think that the footprint would need to be increased. If added to the east end, it would wipe out the driveway between the retail center and the auto service center. If added to the west end, it would result in the parking area winding up in Rumel Road. Applicant is requesting a variance, as Gray pointed out, for two driveways instead of one. I don't think the application documentation accurately reflects the final site configuration, so I'm concerned that the planning commission is being asked to approve it. In closing, neighbor feedback concurs with planning commission staff's recommendation that this application should be denied. We urge you to deny it here in the interest of expediency. Any questions for me?
Commissioners, any questions for either Mr. Stoker or Mr. Williams?
Thank you.
I have applicant, I have, I've got some items in support of this. I think you have a presentation to make. Would you like to make that presentation and then have those individuals speak afterwards? The way you want to do that? Okay.
Are we starting the presentation?
PowerPoint presentation that somebody's pulled up. Give us just a second.
Okay, this is a, just a perspective of what the shopping center would look like. It's going to be very nice and clean and look good. It's going to be a very good looking building. Most of the developments that Mr. Reese has is very nice development. He's got flagstone on buildings and very nice brickwork and so the building will look very, very good. We can move to the next slide. This is the site plan. It sounded like there is some confusion about the square footage. We're only asking for 23,500, not the 28,000 number that Monty had spoke about. And then we're asking for the 6,600, I believe, on the auto related use. And this shows the two driveways that we have on the site. And all of these driveways, although they don't, that we need a variance for the driveways through the city and we're asking for that variance. The State Highway Department is the main person that controls it and we worked with them and got the driveways where they approved the driveways. And if you look at the next slide, and earlier presentations to the planning commission and the board, staff had a write-up and that's just showing that they have confirmed that the highway department has approved these driveway locations. So I think the driveways and the driveway locations are not a problem if the state highway is okay with them. We can move to the next slide. This is just like an existing site survey. So what we have right now is we have three lots and there's three driveways. And we're reducing those driveways to two, like you had seen on the plan before. And we're making it into one large parcel instead of three small tracks. We can go to the next one. Okay, so we're, these are our uses. So we're asking for all of office uses and C1 commercial. And C1 commercial is neighborhood commercial. And then we're asking for a few additional uses of a beverage shop, a swimming pool, sales and supply, an eating place. And I didn't list it on here, but a C4 auto related use. If you just look at the zoning and you look at the location, this is a tract that's on Cantrell. And the daily traffic is somewhere around 35,000 cars a day. And for us to be asking for office and neighborhood commercial on a piece of land that fronts a major roadway with 35,000 cars, I mean, I think this road actually is the busiest road in Arkansas that is not a freeway. And so you've got more traffic coming down this road than any other road that's a non-freeway road in Arkansas. And so for us to ask for neighborhood commercial on a piece of property that fronts the busiest road in Arkansas, I don't think that's a big ask. We can move to the next slide. Okay, this is, this is the list that staff provided in the write-up of why they oppose it. And they don't want, they want to have access to Rumel. They're saying that there's no vehicular access behind the building. The drive-through does not have a specific use. The C4 auto related use is too intense. And the retaining wall height at the north of the property, they're not supportive of. I'm going to go through each one of these and just kind of state some facts and why we feel that we don't agree with these, of why they don't approve of our development. You move to the next slide, please. So we've got, they want, staff wanted us to have a emergency access on Rumel Road. So we've got, they want, staff wanted us to have a emergency access on Rummel Road. And in the state fire code, it requires that if a building is three stories or thirty-foot in height, it shall have at least two means of fire apparatus access. And we have the two accesses, which is on Cantrell and has been approved by the highway department. And so for staff to ask us for a third emergency exit on Rummel, we don't think it's necessary. And then if you look at Rummel Road as a road itself, it is windy and it is steep. It exceeds the ten percent, and usually on a fire, you know, access road, the fire truck does not want it to be more than ten percent. And then thirdly, the neighborhood told us they didn't want the access to Rummel. They didn't want us to access Rummel Road. And so that's one of the main reasons that we don't have it there. And if we make that access, it will cut, there's a berm and kind of a natural buffer there, and we would have to cut into that and cut the trees down and cut it, the terrain and all the dirt down, and then basically provide a window for the neighbors to see the development. And not having the access and leaving the buffer is a way better idea to where the neighbors could drive by this development and really never see it. If you move to the next slide, it will show you some pictures of how Rummel's not a good road for emergency access. And if you look on the bottom picture to the right, there's a bank that goes up right there on the edge of the road, and that's still in the right-of-way, and there's trees there that are still in the right-of-way. And we're going to still provide a natural buffer along that side of the property. And so you can see how there's a hill that's just naturally there. And if we added that access, we would basically cut that hill, cut the trees, and provide way more visibility to the neighborhood, and it doesn't sound like the neighborhood would want that. And so I don't think us adding this access on Rummel is in the best interest of the neighbors, of emergency vehicles, or in our interest. We can move to the second item, the next page, please. Okay, the second reason they oppose our development is they say that there's no vehicular access along the north side or the rear of the building, and this would allow for deliveries and emergency vehicle access. So what do I do? I go and look around Little Rock to see all the buildings that do not have rear access because this isn't a fire code issue, this isn't any issue that I've ever heard of, but this is something that they brought up. So I've got, if you look at the picture on the far right, that is Bowman Heights Shopping Center. That's another shopping center that Mr. Reese, the developer of this project, owns, and they did not have rear access, and that has been a very good facility for them, and it works very well. And I don't think they've ever had any problems with emergencies or deliveries or any of that nature. The middle picture there, that's Best Buy and Whole Foods. Now, Best Buy and Whole Foods does not have a rear access. I mean, emergency vehicles clearly could get there. I mean, this is a very large buildings and development, and they don't have it, so why would a little development like ours need it? The development that's on the very far left is the Chenal Creek. That's right there across from Belle Chevrolet. It has Joseph A. Banks and Cold Stone Creamery. There's no rear access to that one. And so I don't, I don't think that having a rear access is really something necessary or fair for them to ask of us. The whole point of us moving the building back to the rear of the site was that we were trying to get the building back further away from the road to make it less noticeable to everybody that has to pass by. So we were trying to do something that would actually be more aesthetic to the neighbors. And if you move to the next slide, I've got a list of probably ten or twelve more developments that do not have rear access. If you move to the next slide, please. Okay, the third reason that they were against this development, there is a drive-through, and they said that they weren't in supportive of the drive-through because they didn't know what specific use was actually going to be used there. And so I went through our uses and narrowed down, there's only so many things that are going to have a drive-through. And so out of all the uses that we're asking for, the only thing that would be possibly used for this drive-through would be a beverage shop, a bakery, a bank, a dry cleaners, drugstore, a tobacco store, an eating place, or a florist. And the only one there, I think on that list that would have any kind of issue would be an eating place, could have a lot of traffic. But if you look at our site, I mean, we've got hundreds of feet before they would back up into the road. We've got a lot of parking lot there, so I don't think there's going to be an issue, and I don't think we're going to be putting a Chick-fil-A in either. So I don't see what the issue is here on the drive-through. And if we don't have the access to Rummel Road on the west side of the site, we're going to have a natural buffer and of a hillside and trees that will block all of this from the neighbors. So there's really not a negative outcome from having a drive-through on that west side of the building. If you move to the next slide, please. Okay. The C-four auto-related use is too intense for the development. And that seems kind of unfair for us because you go three properties over, and you've got All About Tire, which is a C-four auto-related use, and it is no more than fifty feet, hundred feet from a neighborhood. And I think that they work very well together. We just had a development by that neighborhood. I don't think that there's an issue with All About Tire being by that neighborhood. And so something that is going to be a lot closer to houses and has already been approved, why could we not have a C-four related use that actually fronts Cantrell, three properties over? The other thing is, is that at the rear of our site, there's a landowner, Mr. Hughes. He owns forty acres, and he is an approval of the project. And we have a letter written and signed by him approving this project and saying that he's in favor of it. And then the actual C-four auto-related use, I mean, will it serve the neighborhood? Yes, people can go to that. I mean, that's something that'd be good for a neighborhood, you know? You need your tire fixed, you need, so I mean, it's a use that's useful for a neighborhood. And then if you look at the traffic count, you've got thirty-five thousand, forty thousand cars a day. You don't think that they might have a flat tire, or they might need to get their oil changed? I mean, a road that busy, you're going to look at having an auto-related use on a road that has forty thousand cars a day? The other thing is, is that the hours of these developments are pretty favorable. Usually they're probably around seven to six, I would say, maybe seven to seven, but it's not something that stays open late and opens way too early. I believe the neighborhood also said something about traffic being a problem at C-four auto-related use. Now, if I think about the Firestone that's up on Cantrell, across from Edwards Grocery Store, close to Cantrell, Mississippi, I have never seen a traffic problem coming out of that Firestone. So I don't think traffic's an issue. So the statement he made about traffic problems at a C-four auto-related use, I don't believe You can move to the next slide. Okay, here's the letter from the, it's small and hard to read, but if you get your PowerPoint out and zoom in, you could look at it. But this is the letter from Mr. Hughes that he wrote in favor of our development. So I think that's a huge thing, is that we've got a forty-acre landowner adjacent to the north side of our property in favor of our project. All right, the next slide, please. Okay, the fifth and last reason why staff does not support this development is the retaining wall height. And this just comes down to common sense for us, is that if you have rock that you're cutting into to make a development work, should we cut another twenty-by-twenty-foot area of rock just so we can meet the code? And do we need a wall that is made out of rock veneer, or should we just leave the rock in place? I mean, it's kind of like, okay, this is the most sensible thing. We don't want to get any demolition explosives. We don't want to have a huge rock hammer that's loud and noisy for the neighbors. So this is the best idea to do money-wise, neighborhood-wise, wear and tear on the streets. I mean, we're going to have to haul all that rock out of there. So it just makes sense to, if you've got rock, to leave the rock as much as possible. And then I show on this, on the left picture, you've got basically a rock slope that doesn't have a wall. This is behind Academy Sports. You're probably familiar. And I believe that's like a forty or fifty-foot cut of rock or shale, whatever you want to call it, where they just left it exposed, and it's behind the building. I mean, people really don't pay attention to it. It's not like it's something that's going to hurt the city. So I think it just makes sense for a development not to be trying to build perfect retaining walls with retaining wall blocks just to fit a code. The other example I have is the Starbucks down at Riverdale. You know, there's a big bluff there, and they have, they have where they're cut rock there. And if you flip to the next slide, the left picture is our site. So just to show you, we have rock. It's there. And we've also spoke with Carl Garner, a geotechnical engineer, and we've made some test pits, and we've looked at the veins of the rock we have, and the way the veins of the rock, it actually is in a very favorable direction, where it is going down away from the cut face of the wall. So it's in the most favorable direction to have an open-faced cut slope like we're asking. And then if you look at the picture to the right, this is Tzatziki's, which is next door. And so could we not just develop our site to look like they did at Tzatziki's and how they handled the slope problem at the site next door? I mean, it seems like a very sensible idea that, hey, can we do the same thing the guys next door did? So I don't think this retaining wall height or the lack of having a block wall is going to be an issue. And if you move to the next slide. Now, to settle some of the issues that the city might have, we have purchased a forty-foot temporary and permanent slope easement. And what this will let us do is, is we'll be able to maintain, restore, or repair any kind of slope failure or any kind of issue that we have with that open-faced cut slope. And so we could access it from below, or if we needed to work on it and access it from above, we could, we have forty feet there that we have to take care of this if there's ever an issue to happen. The next slide, please. As you know, we've had this same piece of property and come through here with the planning commission probably five or six times. I mean, we're on L, so this is that many development temps at this property. But in this, it basically has, if you look at number fourteen, it says retaining wall design to exceed fifteen feet in height are required, and variance would be required. And then at the very bottom of J, staff was supportive of the development at that time. And so they knew that there is a wall there that was most likely going to need a variance because it was going to exceed fifteen feet, but yet they were in support of that development. So I don't see why they are not supportive of this for this reason this time, but in the past, they were okay with it and just said, hey, you need to get a variance. If you want to move to the next slide, please. Okay, this is a plan that has been previously approved by the planning commission, and it was in July sixteenth of twenty twenty. So what is it, July eighth today, or June eighth of twenty twenty-three? So we've been working on this thing for over three years, trying to get this project passed. And, you know, it's actually kind of a slap in the face when we come up here and we don't even have enough commissioners to hardly vote in favor of our project. I think we're going to have seven people that could vote on this, and we're not allowed to do a deferral or anything. So we've been working very hard on this thing for over three years, and, and we just, we really want y'all's vote, and we want, we need all, six of out of the seven. So we got six people that could vote for, out of the seven people, so we need that. You can flip to the next slide.
How many more slides do we, Mr. Thrower, are we, where are we on the twenty minutes?
We've exceeded twenty minutes.
Okay, we're just over twenty minutes. So how many more slides do you?
Just the last one.
Last slide, okay. I, okay, go ahead and finish.
That's just another development that was approved by planning commission. And then we can just move on from there.
Okay, any?
Sorry, I exceeded the time.
No, that's not a problem. I had, that's my fault. I had these cards that were in support of, and let me open it up while you're at the podium, let me open it up to any commissioners who may want to ask questions, or staff can respond to any, think, anything that was brought up, just a open forum for staff and commissioners.
And just to, for, I guess, lack of time and want to be receptive to other candidates out there and, and other items on the agenda list, I just wanted to pose to staff, was there anything that the applicant said that we need to respond to or based on the PowerPoint presentation? If so, please advise. Thank you.
Yes, there is several points on there that staff would like to respond. I think the first one I would like to talk about is the retaining wall, the grading. There were several sites shown in the presentation that would allude to staff's inconsistency in review and approval. I do want to remind the commission that the land alteration regulations was adopted in two thousand and five. So every development that was presented, no date of completion was attached to that. There were several that I noticed that was previous to two thousand and five. I won't go through which ones were or not, but I would just ask that the commission take that into consideration, that showing evidence of sites that may have been developed over several decades, even prior to the adoption of the land alteration regulations. You do not necessarily, or cannot necessarily go back and look at what has been done in the past on development and compare it to what regulations are in place. Those regulations were put in place because of past developments that did cut, major cuts. that did cut, major cuts that did expose vertical cuts. And there was a huge outcry and a committee set up both of city staff, professionals and citizens that developed those land alterations. So when staff makes those recommendations today, they are done under those, what we deem, does it meet the intent of those regulations? So that's what I have to say about that one comment and presentation on the retaining wall. When it comes down to the emergency access road, it is directly tied to how the Department of Transportation is building arterials and you've seen it on the new portions of widening on Cantrell where they put in a concrete median. It's all about life, safety and access. The plans for this that goes through has not been set in stone. Right away fully has not been acquired. Plans have not been approved and sent to bid. So at any given point in time, the DOT can change and put a concrete median all the way through what they would be deemed an intersection, which would be rumble. You know, they'd have to open it up for rumble, but they could put it up as close as they want to rumble. And that would affect the driveways. That final layout has not yet been determined. I made the statement very early on to both the neighborhood associations, and I'm sure that they would vouch for that, and the applicant, that the DOT, if presented with a letter that says they would not put a concrete median through this area and block the drives, then that would be reconsideration for emergency access. Emergency access was required on Rumble Road because you are not guaranteed that the fire station that would serve, typical service area that, which is east on Cantrell could get to this one. It's whichever one is available closest. So there is a potential that a fire apparatus accessing it from the west side would have to come to this site. If there was no access off of Rumble and the DOT decides to extend or put a median in, which is hypothetical at best, and while we're covering our bases, then, and they couldn't cross a concrete median they would put in, they would have to drive the wrong way on the north side of Cantrell to get into the driveway, if they're coming from the west. That is a potential. This emergency access allows that opportunity to do that. Also want to point out that every design standard that was called out in this, this presentation is in an appendix in the Arc Survival Prevention Code. They failed to mention that that appendix has to be adopted separate from the Arc Survival Prevention Code when we adopt the ordinance or the Arc Survival Prevention Code. That appendix has not been adopted separately. It can be used. And I also want to point out that if 10% is the maximum that a roadway can be for a fire apparatus to access a burning facility, a fire apparatus or access road is defined that it is any road from the fire station to the point of service. That's a residential structure, commercial structure. There are numerous roads within the city of Little Rock that exceed 10%. The fire marshal reviews it and approves the layout and the access, and they are aware of the percentage of the roadways or drives that is accessing it. On their approval, it is approved. So those are the two main things I would like to address fully on there. The other one for the C4, typically a C4, why we would not support it is based solely upon the arterial use, the amount of arterial. We prefer them to be because C4 intent is to have open display. So think of commercial access on I-30 as you're going southwest away from Little Rock. A lot of C4 uses. It's on the interstate. So that is a proper use for open display. You see grading contractors have their dozers out there and other, you know, car dealers that put out there. But as you get away from interstates and major uses, then you really need to look at where you're putting the C4 uses because you can't have open display and C3 uses and C2 and the adjacent or proximity to residential. And when it is a shopping center, and I believe that's what is being proposed here. It's not one use. There are several uses in there. And so I'm just going to pull up and read what a C4 says, and that's why I'm going to explain that in there. The C4 is intended not to be generally compatible with pedestrian oriented commercial district and shopping centers. And of course, that does change with the size of the center. Right? Where are the pedestrians walking? What is the use of it? So C4 use, as it gets to something more of a neighborhood where you're wanting small commercial come in, then no, you don't want that. As it gets to more arterial based, less traffic, less traffic inside, like I said, a shopping center, then it would be more inclined for the C4. So that is why our opposition to the C4 use, because it adds to the intensity. It's a small site and I would say depth of lot from Cantrell going north. And so how somebody accesses and drives around the site is an important review that should be looked at at staff level and recommendations made to the commission. And that also would fall in line to my last point. And they show, they presented several sites that did not have the rear access. I understand every one of those sites. I've seen them. But again, our recommendation is to look at each site. Every application stands on its own, and what we review and recommend may not be what planning staff review and recommended 20 years ago. Our recommendation stands on the fact that the depth of the lot does not accommodate and would not accommodate a shopping center layout where pedestrian traffic is and deliveries of vehicles that would need to come in to operate those stores. They would have to deliver in the front if no rear drive access. So you will have deliveries in the front. You will have opportunities where pedestrians coming off of their vehicles, a parking needs to get to the building and run into that conflict. So there, there is that. And with that, and also intensity of the uses like we explained, the president stated, did state that they didn't intend to have a Chick-fil-A. But with what they're proposing, they can. The intensity of an eating place, not only based upon the multiple uses that are proposed for a drive through, but also as I'm sure the commission has drove around on the scene, some sites of drive-throughs and other eating places that are frequented, it can also depend on the brand that is being placed in that center. So that is a concern. And that has not been defined enough for the planning staff to review. That is all that I have to address those comments. Thank you.
Thank you for your question and thank you for your comments, Director Collins. Okay, any other questions from planning commissioners? The applicant is out of your presentation, used up all of your time. I do want to permit you to respond to what he said, though. So let's give him three minutes to respond to what Director Collins just said.
Well, on the, on the Rumble Road situation, we, that was one of the main things that the neighborhood wanted. They wanted access. They didn't want access. Mr. Brown, that's on your board. He said, I do, if you, if you just don't put access on Rumble Road, I'm for your development. I know something's going to go there. Just don't put it on there. I said, if you'll do that, we won't put it on there. Then, then I, we talked to Mr. Collins and he said, no, we need to have it. And so I was between here, I said, well, that's fine. We can do it if that's what you want. We can put it in there. But the neighborhood kept saying, no, we don't want it. So we didn't put it in there. We can't please both of them. So we decided to go with the neighborhood. They don't give us credit for that. Then, then the next one is the slope. He mentioned several slopes that was done years and years ago. He forgets about the slope that's right next door that's at Tziki's. It's right next door. They've got a slope. It's cut. They don't have a wall back there. It's cut in the same vein. Carl Garner, my soil engineer, said, John, this slope is, is rock. It's not going to come down. It's a good slope for doing what you're wanting to do. See, the third thing, okay, the access to the back. We tried to design this more or less like, like Chanel Creek down there across from Old Navy because it's a very successful center. We, we, we had some parking in the back, but we moved it in the front because most people don't want to go to the back to walk into, to walk around the center to get to it. So we put all the parking in front, moved our development to the back and, and shortened and reduced the square footage, the overall center so that we could accommodate those people all in the front. And it would make it easier to rent because you can rent small tenants a lot easier. And I have to consider that because we're doing the rental for it. And I think there'll be a lot of small tenants out there that would be very interested in being there. The C4, we could say, okay, we won't put anything in there, C4, except auto use. And we were thinking of Firestone, because they had called me. So we would like to, we'd like to be right there. Can you do that? I said, I don't know. But then again, so we considered traffic. They got, okay, if we put a, a restaurant right there, which was approved earlier by Mr. Collins and this staff and this board, it's going to have twice as many cars coming in in this auto place. You're looking at a restaurant, 10 to one parking spaces. An auto place, three to one. About three times as much traffic coming in and out. And the hours on, on a, on a restaurant like Tziki's, they can go up to 10 o'clock. On an auto place, they close about six. So, and also, if we could tell the neighborhood what's going to go there, they said, that's what they'd like to know. What's going to go there? Okay, auto place, that's the only thing we want for C4. We won't put anything else in. Or if this board says, just go to commercial, we'll just go to the commercial. We tried to be accommodating to the staff and the neighborhood. I think if we had better communication, we could get through a lot of these things. And so we don't have to come here and argue about them up in front of the whole public of the city of Little Rock. Thank you very much.
Mr. Reese, any, any questions from commissioners or comments? Okay, guys, at this point, I would entertain them, I would entertain a motion. I'm a commissioner.
I'd like to make a motion for the staff recommendations, course conditional to substitute to compliance and commitments conditions outlined in the paragraph there.
I second.
Mr. Chairman, he needs to add with the exception of Kyle.
Yeah, with, with the exception of their recommendation for denial.
Oh, yes. And I would like to add to my motion with the exception of recommendation for denial.
It's your prerogative, but you do have those extra cards. Are you not going to call on those people?
I don't, I don't think so at this point.
The applicant did go a little bit over time in the presentation and we gave Mr. Reese some additional time. And we've got three more items to hear after this, so. Okay, we do have a motion and we do have a second. Who seconded that?
Commissioner Thomas.
Okay, all right. Mr. Thrower, roll call vote, please.
Brown is abstained.
Art? Yes.
Haynes?
Yes.
Latur?
Yes.
McDonald?
No.
Thomas?
No.
Vickers?
No.
Vogel?
Yes.
Whittaker is ass. And I have one, two, three, four yes, and three noes.
Okay, so the motion fails. Motion fails. Okay, and you guys probably be back at the city board if, if history is any indication of how this will go. Okay, next item. Thank you very much for your presentation. Next item that we have on our agenda is item number nine. Mr. Moore, can we have a reading, please?
Item number nine, file number Z6611C. This is a rezoning from PCD to UU, 508 Bond Street. Mr. Chair, before I read the staff report, do you want to offer the applicant a defer, chance at deferral?
Yeah, let me, let me do that. Is the applicant present? Probably need to make sure the applicant's present before we do anything else, huh? If the applicant could approach the podium, yeah, let me, let me mention something real quickly. Because of the number of commissioners who are present, which is eight, and because you need a total of six yes votes in order for the application to pass, we offer all of our applicants an opportunity to defer if they wish to do that. I will tell you that we're in the middle of summer, so we have commissioners who are on vacation. And then right now, we have two vacant positions on the commission. We normally have 11 members. We have nine totals. So the, this most we can have right now, unless the mayor appoints someone for our next meeting, would be nine. So you have the opportunity to defer if you wish.
I choose not to defer, but I'll put my hat in the ring for Commissioner Sead.
Okay. You can, you can contact Mayor Frank Scott is the guy on that. Okay, all right. If you'll continue with the reading, Mr. Moore.
Okay, the applicant requests to rezone this 0.185 acre property from PCD to UU to allow single family residents. Most of the property has been undeveloped for a number of years. A metal storage building is located within the south portion of the property. The property owner recently moved a single family residence onto the north portion of the site. The city's future land use plan designates this property as commercial. The requested UU zoning will not require an amendment to the future plan. Staff is supportive of the requested UU rezoning. Staff views the request as reasonable. The remainder of this block, which is block 18 Garland's addition, is currently zoned UU. The proposed UU zoning will represent a continuation of the zoning pattern in this area along Bond Avenue. Staff recommends approval of the requested UU rezoning. Mr. Chair, one point of clarification, the issue before you today is, is it appropriate to rezone this property to urban use to match the bound, the balance of this, this block? The issue before you is not what the applicant is planning to do or develop on the property after the zoning.
Okay, applicant, we've got 20 minutes for either side. You can talk a little bit about your project first, or I've got a number of cards here in opposition. We can handle the opposition first and then come back to you. What would you like to do?
Oh, I'd like to hear the opposition.
Hear the opposition first, okay. All right, this is in no particular order. But I'm struggling to, Joseph Stapina? Sorry if I messed that name up. Okay, great. And remember, 20 minutes total for the entire group, and I have two, three, four. I have five cards here, so if you would be relatively brief with your comments, thank you.
As you know, I'm here to speak in opposition to the, to the rezoning. I represent some adjacent landowners to the project. First, and probably most importantly, if you look at the zoning code, urban use district is established in order to provide for an urban form allowing for mid-rise and high-rise structures. Its purpose is to provide for the office, civic and business core of the city. Structures in the district are encouraged to have multiple uses within the same structure. And the ground or street level structures should be oriented for pedestrian amenities. In the resulting area should be one that is pedestrian and urban oriented. The application itself says that the purpose is to permit single use family structure on the property. That does not sound compatible with the code's own description of UU. Perhaps more importantly, while the surrounding property may be zoned for UU, if you visit that area of the city, it's clear that while there are a few single family structures in that area, it is a commercial, mainly commercial area, and the, the file admits that. If you go to the file itself, applications If you go to the file itself, um, application site is located near the center of a large commercial use area. So this application is seeking to rezone to permit uses that while there in the area are sporadic, not the predominant use of the space. It is not going to provide for an urban form. It is not going to provide for mid or high-rise structures. It is not going to provide for office, civic and business core of the city. It's not going to provide for multiple uses and it's not going to, you know, be oriented for activity and pedestrian amenities. And in, one more thing before I will defer to the other opposition is, um, the application notes that the applicant, um, moved a single-family structure on the property before that was a permitted use for the, for the property. And to me, that itself would be reason to deny a rezoning request using the property for a use that's not permitted before you get the rezoning to allow that use. And so for these reasons, um, I oppose, uh, the rezoning and I would ask the commission to deny the request.
Okay, we'll, we'll go through all the opposition first and then we'll get back to you. I've got several more cards here. Okay, Doug Woodall.
How does that like for Mr. Burkhalter?
Okay, John Burkhalter.
We have Mr. Burkhalter. I'm John Burkhalter. I've been a landowner in this area for over 15 years, known Danny for years, great guy. I, um, my, this, this is, I have built two major developments in the area just to the, uh, north of this property on along the river, the Rock City Yacht Club, which, uh, I built a city park, a public launching ramp, uh, a large pop park is going to be dedicated to my parents. And also, uh, boat slips. I've also built for residents at Harbertown, which is 176 market rate apartment development, which I'd like to say we're all open but one building and we are full. I've spent a tremendous amount of capital, time and effort in this area. I own the land immediately to the east of Danny's land in this area along the entire block. I have paid, played by the rules. It took me years and years to get permitting from the city, the county, the state and the federal government. I was told you don't, you're, we're not going to give you this permit because you'll never get that permit. Long story short, I said, please, everybody stay in their lane. I got the permits and I've invested a tremendous amount of money down there and it's very successful. I'm very concerned about along the Bond corridor, uh, the land I bought there across from Danny is going to be commercial. And as soon as I finish this last building, we're going to be coming forward with a plan there. My concern is, is, um, the, is what is going to be allowed or brought into this neighborhood? And going forward, the president said it would set on this area. Uh, it's very close to the presidential library, Heffer, the plan, veterinarian school and the dental school. And my request would be that you defer this and allow staff a chance to look at the zoning in this area so that we really make a very sound, logical decision. Thank you.
Thank you, um, Brian Hosto.
And Hosto too. It's, I guess it's great that neighbors can like each other but disagree at the same time. Um, so, uh, my name is Brian Hosto. I'm a property owner in the area. I've been a property owner for over 20 years in that area. The closest property I have to, to this is on the southeast corner of, uh, Third and Bond, which is very close. Uh, if you look at that area, Mr. Burkhalter is correct and he's, and he's made a remarkable improvement, uh, for the city and really done a great service for what we've, uh, um, been able to do down there. East Village is, is one of the showplaces of, of the future of Little Rock. This particular street, while, while there are a number of, of uses in that area, Bond to the south of, of, um, uh, of Sixth Street, as everyone knows, is all commercial. And it's only natural for it to be the kind of entrance corridor over into a lot of that. There's commercial uses all up and down Bond Street, north of Sixth Street where this property is. And to, uh, have residential there would be, um, uh, a mistake and it would, it would, uh, it, it would negatively impact the future development. I, I realize this in my request for residential zoning, I realize that that's not relevant to the zoning request. Uh, but at the same time, it's obvious there's a house sitting there. So that's what the intended use is going to be. So I would just, uh, again, because of all of the momentum we've got and all the good things going in the area, I, I think the, um, Bond Street is the obvious, uh, commercial street. And that's what, uh, UU zoning and the current zoning of, uh, the PCD is meant for. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hosto. Uh, Valerie Hinton?
My name's Valerie Hinton and I'm going to defer my time because so many people are speaking. I didn't exactly know what was going on. I own the property at Six and Bond. And, um, as these gentlemen have alluded to, there's houses on Third and Bond, so I don't. I'm deferring my time.
Okay, Mr. Mr. Woodall, did you want to come up and speak or have they said your piece?
It would, uh, really be about the same repetition.
Okay, thank you very much. We'll have the applicant come up now. If you will, come up and state your name, please, first.
Yes, my name is Danny Lewis. Go ahead. All right. Um, I'm proud that you fine gentleman come out. I'm familiar with the other three, but this young man here I've never met before. But I would say, I would say that he is, uh, well, all of them are quite impressive individuals. But I'm just a little guy in the room. But I've lived in East Little Rock my entire life, uh, 61 years, and they're new to the neighborhood. Anyway, the other side of this is, uh, the use does allow for single families. But also I am a real estate broker and I plan to use it for my office. And that storage shed to the south is a commercial kitchen. So there are multiple uses on that half acre, point four six acres. Um, but will this one structure alter the entire area? No. Will the, I play by the rules. I received permission via email before I moved the structure. Um, and the permits will be issued after, um, giving permission here at the planning commission carefully. Uh, Bond south of Sixth Street is industrial, not commercial, but industrial. Uh, AFCO Steel, uh, Felco, um, the sheet rock, can't think of the name of it. But again, um, I've owned that property for 24 or five years and I thought it was my right to do as I please. The PCD that is being considered to be removed from the, uh, property was, uh, done about eight, nine years ago. And I am now just removing the PCD. That is the only thing. There's another meeting for this other use. That's all I have to say. Any questions?
Questions from, uh, commissioners or comments from staff?
And staff did recommend approval. Permitted use.
Uh, yeah, so I have a question about, uh, UU. We don't, we don't get that zoning much here, so, and, and it's, uh, limited to probably just certain places in town. So can, can someone describe for the commissioners sort of what, what UU entails and what, what, when we zone something, UU, sort of what we want it to look like as a city?
Mr. Chair, I can. Um, and one of the opposition was correct and UU is reading sections out of what we would like to see. You know, because really UU is meant for density and that's kind of the density model that he explains. So just think about some of the towers that we have in downtown on there. So we want UU to really develop from right away to right away. Um, we want density. But also at the time that the board approved UU, there was a lot of vacant tracks in the area. So, uh, the other benefit to the UU is just redevelopment in general. Um, the city understood, staff understands that you're not going to have high rises on every block. You have to have supporting structures, smaller commercials, smaller other industries that will support a downtown core. Um, that could be even what we have nowadays, a school downtown to do that. So there's multiple uses in there. The only description that, uh, that I wanted to describe is the actual, uh, regulated uses. Unless, and I'm going to read from the permitted uses section underneath UU. And that kind of entails, uh, some of what Mr. Burkhalter talked about also, that even though he does have condominiums over there, they're not the really real high rise. Mr. Burkhalter, are they, I think they're four stories, I think? All three? Yeah. Oh, I'm sorry, uh, you've corrected that. It's, he said market rate apartments, not condominiums. Thank you for that. Uh, but the allowed uses, unless otherwise indicated, shall include all those allowed in residential districts, office district, commercial district as permitted uses for us, that is by right uses, uh, as, as those uses specified and activities. And they go on, uh, really describing some outdoor activities like eating places when it's tied to eating places and bars and the number of seats and rooftop and mobile canteen units. So the intent is that you can have residential. And you can have residential adjacent to commercial, which we typically don't use. I mean, that's what the use for. You want development of the lots. You want somebody living, walking to their place of business. Uh, and so anywhere in the UU, there could be residential. So if it's owned UU, it's not specific to be commercial. It could be multifamily. It could be single-family residential or all of the R one, two, three, R four. It could be office. It could be commercial. It could be a mixed use high rise. Um, it could be market rate apartments. Um, it's, it is intended to be a, when they did that, an overall development to spur development in the downtown core. So that is the UU.
I have a couple of questions. Do we know when the PCD was approved for this property originally?
I don't have that information. I believe Mr. Lewis stated when that was approved.
About eight years ago.
Okay.
I was working on the metal building to the south of this prop. Uh, it's all one parcel, but, um, it's just to the south. And it was, um, I would say 2013, 2015, 2015.
Okay, yes, sir.
Al- also in addition to that, when this property was zoned to PCD, it was not UU. The, it was done prior to the UU designation existing. So this property was zoned industrial at the time it was zoned to PCD.
So with the PCD, I mean, it's pretty rigid in what is allowed in the, on the parcel, correct?
That's correct. It's the, the whole intent of a planned development is to come in and have specific uses that you want to do. And it ties and goes with the land. Um, and the property owner or developer that owns the property, um, if it was not developed for a PCD, there's, in three years, there's a, uh, revocation clause in there. They can ask for revocation if it hasn't been implemented. If it's been implemented, they can, uh, property owner can request a revision to or revocation of a PCD at any moment in time also.
So the applicant is the one who asked for the PCD and then the applicant's coming back for a rezoning. But in the meantime, there's a structure that's been placed on a PCD that was pretty explicit what was able to be put on there, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, so my question, the applicant is, who gave you the email that allowed you to put said structure on said property?
Staff.
That was from the planning department?
Yes.
Okay.
Because it's an exact.
Mr. Chairman, I'm a little confused. Exactly what's the use of the, what does he want to do with it? The write-up says build a house, is that right?
It will also be my real estate office. I'm a real estate broker.
So, so it'll be a combination of, it'll be a residence and an office?
Yes.
And the, and the structure you moved on the property, that's the intended?
Yes.
That, that's what will be though?
This is, I operate out of my current residence, yes.
To clarify that point a little further, Mr. Lewis came to us back a few months ago and said he had a house on a piece of property that had to be moved by the end of April. Well, we told Mr. Lewis is we can support him moving the house if he submitted a rezoning application first, uh, to UU for the balance, which is, which will match the balance of the, the block. Uh, he filed that application. We supported him moving the house, but that's it, not hooking it up, not putting it on permanent foundation, nothing else, until the zoning was approved. And, um, I thought, I believe Mr. Lewis may want to, um, expand on this, but he's been a, a good steward of this area for a number of years. I believe he's saved quite a few houses from demolition.
This is my ninth house to be moved. Um, it's called repurposing instead of someone destroying, demolishing. Uh, this is an opportunity to save a structure that has very good bones in it. Uh, it is, um, a very good piece of property and is wonderful office. Slash residence.
Mr. Brown?
I have a question to the applicant. Did I understand you correctly that you own the adjacent properties?
Yes.
So this is just, it's a piece of a larger parcel that you own?
We're just removing the PCD.
Okay.
This is, yes. I already own the, to the south, uh, what is it? A half an acre, point four six acres of an acre.
Yeah, ye- yes, i- it is. I wanted to make sure that other commissioners didn't have a question. I, one more quick question and then we can have the opposition come back up. They have plenty of time left. Um, do we have a zoning map we could put up to show the, what the neighborhood looks like now? I mean, if you drive around Bond Street in the, in that neighborhood, are you going to see a lot of UU all over the place? Or is this a kind of an exception?
Pulling up.
So, so there's a little bit of everything, but there is a lot of UU in this.
West of Bond Street, south of the river, north of Sixth Street is, uh, to I thirty is the designated area in, including the presidential park. This is also a part of the presidential park overlay and there is a height restriction of three stories.
Okay, any other questions from commissioners or staff? Okay, the opposition's got a little more time, so if you'll have a seat, I'll let Mr. Hosto come back up and he may have a follow-up question from your previous comments.
I would just point out that, uh, the nearest businesses that are close to this, um, there's Rosie's Pot and Kettle, which is a really popular restaurant that is basically across the street and north a little bit. Uh, my question, or what I, and I don't know if I should pose the question to the applicant or if he would address whatever, is, is this going to just involve one residence? And is it a residence and an office or, or both? If we change the, the PCD to allow a residential use, then there could potentially be more houses, uh, older houses that are brought into the neighborhood.
Okay, will the applicant address that question, please?
Again, this is just to remove the PCD that was done eight, nine years ago. And that the use of a single-family house, a residence slash office, you can use one room in your office to make it your office, which I do downtown and capital zoning is currently. Um, so it's, it's going to look marvelous. It's going to look great here shortly. Yes, there are other, um, let's see, how should I say? The, um, The, um, there are numerous properties that have been built in the area to the, to the north. There, before you cross the levee, there are two new, uh, single family residences that have been constructed here in the last four years that are, um, uh, what is that? Third, there you are, right there. Uh, right there, Third and Bond. So there are already two other residences and I'm, I'm going to match that stuck old look with the bricks as well. Oh, it's going to look real nice. This will be a great addition to the, uh, my neighborhood that I grew up in.
Seems like the nature of that question was though, and this is a question for staff. He, he, he's placed a single family dwelling that he's going to use as house slash office, but it's not a subdivision, right? You, you know, and it's not, you can't, you couldn't just move 10 other
No.
dwellings onto the property, right? I, Mr. Hosto, I don't know if that addresses your question or not. That's what I thought you were asking. Mr. Burkhalter, did you have a follow-up?
The city took years allowing me to be permitted, years. I was literally worn out, but I was not going to give up on the east end. I wanted to do something wonderful there. I would ask if it could be deferred so y'all could continue to look at this. I waited years and I am very concerned about what might happen with multiple houses being placed on very small lots. Um, it's just, um, I think sometimes we hurry up and make mistakes and this might be one that should be deferred.
Well, the applicant can speak to that. He's, he's right here. So is it something you?
I've waited years as well, sir. And I, um, like to say that this is an acceptable use. Staff supports it and here we are. And I've waited some part of it. Um, and at some point in juncture, I would think that, um, it is, um, you'll like it. You'll like it.
Just one other comment. Danny's my friend.
But you would never, ever let me do this. And that's again, not my decision, nor is it yours. That's why we're here, where planning is to decide.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Okay. Briefly, and then we'll.
It's going to take less than a minute. Uh, the decision to, uh, to permit some, uh, a residential structure in this area will have impact on other development. There are, um, criteria that, that affect development that apply only if there are residential structures in the area, such as how lighting must be placed, whether or not there's a setback, uh, whether, and that depends on whether there are residential structures adjacent or not. And so if a residential structure is placed in the area, it does have impact on what can be developed, how things can be developed, and, um, it will limit potentially other uses of this UU that's supposed to be a broad use category, um, depending on whether or not a residential structure is placed in the area.
Okay. Thank you. One more comment from the applicant and then we'll.
I would have to ask each person in the opposition, why is this one little 1,200, less than 1,200 square foot house such a problem? Um, I have the other property that's there, that's not going to be, um, the other little houses that would be, um, brought in. I'm wondering where would they go? If you own, if Mr. Burkhalter owns the property across the street to the east and, um, 1515 holding holds the property to the north, um, uh, and the only block that is available, and there are only five other property owners between bonded by Sixth Street, Capitol, Pepper and Bond, I don't foresee, uh, a bunch of little houses popping up. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much. I would, uh, entertain a, um, a motion, please.
Uh, yes, Mr. Chairman, I have a motion to approve, uh, including all staff recommendations, conditionals, uh, compliance with the comments, conditions outlined in the paragraph there.
We have a motion? We have a second for Mr. Brown?
I second.
Okay. All right. Roll call vote, please, Mr. Thrower.
Mr. Chairman.
Sorry, we have, we do have a comment.
Before we make a final vote on it, can I say, is there something, I guess, to the applicant? Uh, maybe we can say if he wants to defer, I don't know if he said yes or no to the question. Did he want to defer and maybe speak with his, uh, with the opposition or, or speak with his neighbors and come back for next meeting? I didn't know if, I didn't get it.
I believe he said no, but I may have misunderstood.
I did say no.
Okay.
Yeah, I appreciate it.
He, he's ready to get this thing done. So, okay. Uh, we have a motion and a second. Any other comments from many commissioners? Okay, Mr. Thrower.
Brown?
Yes.
Art?
Yes.
Haynes? Commissioner Haynes?
Yes. Yes.
Yes, sir, I got your yes. Commissioner Haynes? Latur?
Yes.
McDonald?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Vickers?
Yes.
Vogel?
No.
And a no?
No.
I have one, two, three, four, five, six, seven votes. Motion passes.
Okay. Thank you very much to the applicant and those who, who spoke against. Um, item number 12 is next on my list, which is the rezoning from R3 to R4 at 3924 Potter Street. Uh, Mr. Moore?
Yes, item 12 is filed in rezoning 9790, rezoning from R3 to R4, 3924 Potter Street. Uh, Mr. Chair, before I go into this, would you like to offer the deferral to the applicant?
Yes, I keep forgetting that. I said I would do it with each app. Is the applicant present, uh, for item number 12, the Potter Street application? If you would, please approach the podium. I want to ask you a real quick question. The applicant, uh-huh? The applicant is not here? Okay.
Chairman, the applicant was present earlier in the meeting. Uh, you mind if I go look out, take in the hall and see if she's still here?
Yeah, let's check and make sure she's not out in the hallway, Mr. Thrower.
The applicant is not in the hall, parking lot, or naive knocked on the restroom door. Nobody's in there.
Automatically deferred.
Mandatory deferral?
Mandatory.
Mandatory deferral for both items.
Okay. So if you're still here waiting to hear those items, uh, either 12 or 14, um, the applicant is the same individual for both of those items. And so if the applicant is not present, it amounts to a mandatory deferral. Is that correct?
I got a question. Can I have some question, please?
No, ma'am. If the applicant is not here, we cannot hear from either the applicant or the opposition.
I just want to know if we'd be notified for the deferral.
Yes.
Now there you can.
You will. And we don't, we obviously don't have any, we obviously don't have any control over whether the applicant shows up for their, uh, application. I believe she was here earlier and is no longer here. So do y'all feel like we've done our due diligence and looking on the premises for the applicant?
I, I do believe, and I think they've, uh, both Mr. Moore, Mr. Overton was looking at me. Since this item was on the agenda, uh, it does say in the bylaws that the applicant is not here. The item shall be deferred. We, we can take a vote, but we do not have a choice.
We have some people in the audience who are a little confused. This is a little bit odd, so I'm going to let them ask questions because.
Uh, Chair, I'm, I'm going to advise you, I can't tell you what to do, but you cannot hear opposition if the applicant is not here. That sets a precedence and you hear stuff from the opposition and you're not hearing from the applicant.
The applicant is not here. Are you here to speak against it or are you here to? Okay, we, we are not, since the applicant is not here, we cannot hear the items. We can't hear for or against on the items. I thought you might have a question about would, would there be notifications or would she have to, uh, repost signage or resend letters or things like that? Yeah, we can talk to you after the meeting if you'll, we're, we're about to adjourn. Yeah, yeah. Sean, our counsel, will talk to you on that. Okay, I'm showing, are we, do we have other items to discuss?
Uh, yeah, one other item, but for the record, 12 and 14 will be deferred to the July 13th meeting. And your, your, your final item is your, um, your bylaw amendment item.
Um, that was. Uh, we got, did we get the zoning ordinance on the consent agenda, right? Okay, we have the bylaw amendment.
Yeah, I had discussion on the bylaw amendment.
Okay. All right. Uh, I'll turn it over to staff then and let them comment on that.
Mr. Chair, what, what happened to item D? What happened to item D?
Uh, item D was withdrawn.
Okay, thank you.
And for, and I just want to, I was searching through the bylaws since we was there, going to talk about it just for clarification. I'm going to read it for the record for everybody so that everybody can understand while we did, uh, staff recommended what we did. It says applicant attendance at public hearing. The applicant on each item docketed shall be present or represented at the public hearing and prepared to discuss the request. If applicant or designated representative is not present, the item shall be deferred one time to the next appropriate public hearing. So, I mean, that's what we're talking about. And, and so I just wanted to clarify that before we go on to the other discussions of the amendment.
Point of clarification on that reading, should it not, or does it say the regular agenda? I mean, if it's just saying shall be present, then everyone, regardless of where their item is on the consent or not, should in theory.
Yeah, they have to, it's any agenda item. It's, you know, because we create the consent agenda. We could place everything on just regular agenda.
Okay, let's talk about the amendment.
Okay. Well, the, uh, as I understand it, I was on vacation with the last time we had the discussion. Uh, there's two little portions of the amendment to the bylaws. First of it, uh, I would like to bring out there just clarifications or amendment processes to what the bylaws are, site plan review that we eliminated and stuff like that. So at the end of this, I would, uh, request, uh, that, uh, we, if we want separate votes, that we really need one for just cleanup of the bylaws for one, and then the other one is for the public notice. On the public notice portion, uh, if we could bring up the exhibits, um, just over the years that I've been there, they have been a, uh, managing the department. There's been just, uh, requests on request, on request of more notifications. And we went through several iterations of trying to get out more notifications to everybody. Uh, even to the tune that now we send out, uh, notifications to all neighborhood associations throughout the city if they're registered. Uh, and that's just because sometimes I would get, well, we weren't notified and they felt like they was close enough that they need to be notified for the development. So it has always been the trend since I've been there to provide more public, uh, transparency and notification when we're trying to have these meetings. Uh, so, and one of those is, is just a request that why shouldn't we be more in distance? You know, and so I sat down with executive administration and also several board members that have heard that same, uh, request, uh, brought up to their meetings, you know, at the board of directors, um, and the, just why can't we notify a little bit larger round? And then, and so they did not necessarily specify a distance. Uh, staff recommends this distance of 300 because we did feel that that, uh, gave a little bit additional notification that would be through certified. Uh, but also, uh, want to talk about what we're working on to try to notify more on a proactive stance of anybody, not necessarily neighborhood associations that want to be notified. Uh, that's not part of the bylaws right now. So the, the trend is, is to provide more notification, not less notification. So we did run, uh, a little analysis and as you can see here, it's mainly going to be some of the smaller development, developments that may be impacted on this notification. And we just in general.
Just second director calls. Ma'am, could, do you think y'all could take y'all's, y'all can get, you take your conversation out in the lobby out there? You, you're, okay. Thank you. Go ahead.
And so you can kind of see the, what we would anticipate, this is just for certified mail, uh, receipts of what that would cost if somebody went from a 200-foot notification to a 300-foot notification and that additional cost. Um, do we have another? So the, uh, the next slide? The next page. This one is the residential. If they was looking to do like a smaller tract. You have the other one, Alter?
Yeah, for those commissioners who may not have been here last time, we're, what we're talking about is increasing notification potentially from 200 feet to 300 feet. And then there's a note there that, on that sticky note, and we did have some conversation about this last time, there would be an increase in the cost to the applicant.
Yes, and that, and that's primarily what that is. Um, and it depends on the development, on the increase of that, the people that own property to be notified. Do we have the one with the commercial, larger tracks on there?
It showed up originally.
Yeah.
Lot less on a commercial than a residential.
And, and when that really boils down to the size of the tract, as you get larger tracks, uh, side by side, especially if it's surrounded by larger tracks, that the, the, the 200 to 300 is not going to make that much difference on the overall larger development. Um, but also we had this, the other slide up there with the smaller single family residential. Um, so there's your larger, uh, commercial tract. Um, now the impact to the commercial for redevelopment, uh, definitely can definitely be a larger impact on the area. Where the impact for the residential is a lot of the stuff that comes in on those types of uses for what they're doing, a single family residential, doesn't necessarily go before this commission. You know, like variances and stuff goes to the board of adjustments, uh, and those. And, and this is not, this distance proposal is not for them. This is just for the commission. So we're looking at rezoning. So we're looking at rezoning of property, which can really affect residential. And so staff does believe that even though the increase would be more for the smaller tracks, we showed that example of just residential because that's really some of the smallest tracks that we have that would affect the others. But just think of it, what if it was a rezoning to a short-term rental, uh, or an office or some other type of office complex or C1 in the neighborhood? Um, this rezoning would not necessarily impact a single family residence. They're looking to change it to some other type of zoning. That's a commercial that may impact the residence. Uh, so, you know, that, we still believe that still is a nominal cost in the, uh, addition of the 100-foot and would also, uh, help and comply with some of the requests that we've received from the public, uh, to increase our notification. The other aspect of that that I wanted to hit on that is not part of the bylaws, a portion of it, um, is we plan to, and we're implementing it now. Part of it is getting all of our planning, our zoning applications, our subdivisions in our system. We have our N4 system, our CDR system that really processes all our building permits. If everybody's, uh, ever been on there to look at that. That system can also accommodate the planning section, the zoning, uh, section. And we're working on those permits as we speak now to get those implemented. Once. Once we get those implemented, I've already spoke with IT about working with, and we'd be able to have some type of sign-up, kinda like you see on MailChimp or some others, where subscribers could say, hey, I want to be able to hear anything happening within a certain area of my property. And we should be able to go in, pull from that list and see if they're within that distance of the specific track, since it will all be in the system, and provide them notification automatically through our process. Now, I was speaking very high level. That is not implemented yet, but that, that is the gist of why we wanna go into this new system so that when we put something in, we'll be able to let the public see it quicker. I can't say exactly how quick, still we have to have to process everything, but hopefully be able to see where the application is going to be for rezoning. Kinda mimic the same stuff that we have now, we replace the sign, but we haven't really made the agenda yet. There will be an opportunity to have that same digital knowledge where somebody can sign up for and be able to be notified of when something is applied for within so many feet of, you know, their property. So, that's the future, what we're looking to go for. So, even though I do believe that this 300-foot increase is nominal, I believe that, and we have to do that by state law for the property. I think we do need that. We also plan to let others throughout the entire city who wishes to be notified of development within whatever feet they choose, if we can make that happen, to be notified automatically, you know, for it. And they wouldn't necessarily have to be the property owner of record that we notify with 300 feet. So, with that, I would just be here to answer any questions the commission may have.
So, you back 300 feet?
Say it again, Commissioner Latour.
You're in favor of 300 feet?
Yes, I'm in favor of 300 feet, or staff is in favor of 300 feet.
Okay.
Question to, I'm sorry, you done, Commissioner?
Paul, are you done?
Yeah.
Okay.
Quick question to the staff. I think I asked last time, I'm sorry if I'm misremembering, about the percentage of applications that we have that are the commercial rezoning versus say, a single-family home wanting to change something. What you just said, Director, is that this would not impact things like adjustments. This would just be changing the zoning, major zoning changes, not like little things like, I want a higher fence than what.
That is correct. It is only this, this commission can hear items like that in a replating issue and placing additions on certain issues, especially on a planned development. But when it is already a platted lot in the subdivision, any variances to the codes, zoning codes is a board of adjustment matter, typically not a planning commission matter. So, I do not believe this would affect, their notification is different than the planning commission's notification process.
Questions, I know we had commissioners last time who were, expressed some concerns about, your comments are very helpful, Jamie. We had some commissioners express concerns about the, just the difference for the residential folks, about 700 bucks really for, but, but it won't, it sounds like it won't be a fence height or a, you know, my swimming pools over six feet or something. It'll be more like a rezoning change or something like that.
Yes, it would be a use change of the zoning. And as, and y'all have all been here for several years or now, the number of single-family lots that you see rezoning is a very small proportion of the amount of rezoning items that you do see.
Okay, do we want to?
Mr. Chair. Well, he's, how many of tonight's, there were 20 something items on the agenda, how many of tonight's would have to pay the increased fee? Half? What I see, I don't see you gain that much. On the little chart he showed, where it went from 200 to 300 in the residential area, it almost doubled the cost. And I couldn't count that fast, but apparently they didn't seem to pick up very few additional houses.
What's being proposed is to go from 200 feet to 300 feet on all applications. So, every application that comes before you except for Platts would be affected by the notification.
I think.
I totally disagree with this increase. I totally disagree with this increase because it really, I mean, things are getting more expensive, not cheaper. And so, it really kinda disproportions, I mean, the average Little Rock citizens for even participating in this process in order to, is, I just don't think the cost versus the increase in notifications, it doesn't seem to weigh out right.
I had one, I had a question last, the last meeting. If we could try to do the 300 for the commercial and leave the residential at 200, but I just heard that you said it would be for everything. So, I was wondering if that was an option because I too am concerned about affordability when it comes to, you know, the, just important people being able to afford this.
Commissioner McDonald, when we, my only comment is just a concern of trying to single out a specific zoning within all of our other zoning categories to say this is what our notification is going to be. Because really, the notification requirement that we're talking about is a, it's a supplemental requirement. The state requirement is just that we notify in a newspaper of prominent circulation, is I believe what the law reads, and Mr. Overton can correct me. But even today, right, that state law is a little bit antiquated in the fact that how many people actually even get a newspaper nowadays of prominent circulation? As opposed to get their news on the internet and other aspects. So, we have to be more diligent today to try to make sure that people are notified. That's why I do not believe that an increase in that, the 100-foot is that big of an issue. But I do understand about the residential. And I don't wanna get it confused that since we had shown you residential lots, that that is a rezoning to a residential. And that type of scenario, when it comes before us, it already is residential. So, they're looking to rezone it to another planned development, which some of the items, several items that was on the agenda today that Commissioner Latour talked about was short-term rentals. But they are deemed a commercial entity. So, you're rezoning a residential to commercial. So, the impact is not necessarily to a single-family homeowner that is in a single-family use. They are choosing to develop their property and make it a commercial use as opposed to a single-family residence. So, there is cost to development that's associated with that. And I do understand, Commissioner Thomas, costs do go up. It doesn't necessarily get cheaper. You know, just by cost of living, it goes up. And notifications, you know, even the certified mail notification has gone up. But also, the cost of that land has gone up, the cost of the development has gone up, and whatever revenue that commercial entity that is looking to rezone that property, their revenue would typically go up proportionately. So, I don't believe it's affecting the, just a single-family residential home. It's affecting the rezoning or the use for it. So, I do believe that even though it does go up, it will go, the revenue will go up proportionally to generate it off of whatever business that is proposed to be rezoned.
Can we also consider the option of notifying people electronically? Like utilizing our website? I mean, people use their phones or tablets, internet. I mean, what, once you pay a title company, and then you pay for the certified delivery, it is a significant cost. It really is. When we could simply post these notifications to our city website. I mean, that is our newspaper. Even the newspaper, the Arkansas Democrat Gazette is on digital. So, I don't know why we can't do this digital to give, you know, the public citizens some relief.
Well, part of, I understand exactly what you're getting at, Commissioner Thomas. And that is, I explained that's what our goal is in the future, that we're trying to implement something that anybody wants to be notified. The certified mail was implemented as a, in the bylaw by the commission, was just to confirm those receipts because you do have individuals and you've heard them before and come in and say, I wasn't notified. You know, the property owner for zoning, the actual property owner, not necessarily the individual that may be renting the property, they're the ones that by law are affected and they need to be notified. And that's that certified list. And I believe at the time, they just, that was their way of saying, hey, this, this gives us that knowledge that it was mailed out to the property owner. So, if somebody does show up at a, at the commission meeting or the board meeting or they say, I wasn't notified, then we can pull up the green card that we get back and provide them that. Now, in the past, we didn't necessarily have all the green cards with us at the commission meetings. They were in the files and received, but we have the ability. And if you remember, we've done that several times in the past where we've, somebody's went off on the side, went and found that green card and was able to notify the other, the individuals that spoke on an item that said they weren't notified. We was able to show them that that property was notified through that certified mail process. So, I do believe that if we're, if you're speaking about eliminating that and going to something else, we'd be willing to look at that as, my only caution is, is that we need a way to be able to break that back up at some point in time and say, there, you were properly notified within that distance. And, and right now, we don't have that except for that certified mail process.
Did you have something, Monty, that you were gonna mention before?
I just wanna mention that what Jamie said about residential lots also holds true for conditional use permits and special use permits. There are instances where an applicant is asking for a higher use of a property than what's allowed. So, it holds true for all your applications that come before you.
Are you guys ready to vote on this separately? We've got another issue to talk about, right? But we, or is that the only one?
That's it.
That's it?
That's it.
Okay, I thought there was something else sort of that went along with this. Okay, well, any other questions or comments from commissioners? Otherwise, we'll, I guess, just a regular vote, right? Roll call vote on this particular.
Yep, just a regular roll call vote. You're amending your bylaws. I'll leave it to the chair to decide how the vote, if, you know, I would suggest one for the, the remaining, the standard deal that was cleanup that we did for the site plan review. Everybody's seen those. And then a separate vote for the increasing of the notifications from 200 to 300 across the board for all items heard before the commission.
Okay, let's, let's take the two. What now you? Site plan review?
Yeah, there were, there were markups or red lines presented. That was just a cleanup of the, we didn't propose anything new. We was just removing some aspects that we removed in the code, the zoning code process that we didn't go through and clarify and remove in our bylaws. We haven't been doing them because it's not in the code.
Okay.
All right, I'd like to make a motion to approve the site plan reviews for the planning commission bylaws, since this is the first one, right?
Yeah, that's for just the cleanup and removal of.
Gotcha.
Have a motion and a second discussion? Okay, we, that was his second. Okay, roll call, Mr. Thrower.
Brown?
Yes.
Art?
Yes.
Haynes?
No.
Latur?
Yes.
McDonald?
No.
Thomas? Commissioner Thomas? I'm back, she was here earlier. Vickers?
Yes.
Vogel?
Yes.
Whitaker's still absent. Commissioner Thomas, are you there?
Now, that was a vote on the cleanup, not the 200 feet, is that correct?
That's correct.
That's correct, guys. That was a vote on just the cleanup. This should just be kind of a housekeeping deal. If you thought we were voting on the 200 versus 300.
Okay, I, I'm sorry, I did not understand that.
I thought that might be the case.
Yeah, we, I guess we have to technically vote two separate. This one is just to clean up the red, red lines. The next one is the 200, 300, we're about to get.
Change of mind, yes.
I would like change of mind, yes, as well.
Okay, I'll start over with the no's. There were, I think there were two of them. Haynes?
Yes.
And McDonald?
I would like to change my no vote to yes.
All right. Has Commissioner Thomas rejoined us?
How many yeses do we have?
Seven, seven, the motion carries.
Okay, the motion carries, okay. So, now we're gonna vote on the 200, 200 versus 300. And, and I think maybe a motion would be in order to just.
I can go, I'd like to make a motion to move from the planning commission bylaws, propose amendments from 200 to 300 feet.
Okay. Have a motion?
Second.
We have a motion in a second, so let's clarify what we're, what we're voting on. You, you made a motion.
So, this one would be moving from 200 to 300 feet. So, yes would be you, you agree with going to 300, no, you wanted to stay 200.
There you go, okay. Roll call vote.
Brown?
Yes.
Art?
Yes.
Haynes?
No.
Sorry, it's inaudible, Commissioner Haynes, can you repeat it?
No.
Thank you. Latur?
No.
McDonald?
No.
Thomas? Vickers?
I think Thomas, she's up, she was up on here. She didn't come back up, looked like she maybe had.
Commissioner Thomas? Commissioner Thomas? Yes, ma'am.
Hello?
Yes, Commissioner Thomas, can you hear me?
Hello?
We can't hear you.
I'm voting no. I don't know if you can hear me or not.
Yes, we can hear. We will log you down as no. Right, Vickers?
No.
Vogel?
No.
And Whitaker's absent. The 200 feet will, the 200 feet will remain the same, the 300 feet is denied.
300 feet is denied, okay. Any other business to come before? Any public comments or any other business to come before the planning commission tonight?
Just wanna say thank you to Walter Malone. I think this is his last official planning.
That's correct.
This is Walter. Appreciate all his service and all the institutional knowledge he has, three weeks to pass along.
Well, man, how long have you been here, Walter? Just 36, you couldn't make it to 40?
Congratulations, definitely.
Congratulations, man, congratulations. Yeah, Walter's retiring.
Wow.
Walter, there are some vacancies.
Now, Walter, what is the official date? McDonald's aren't right, yeah. What is the official date, Walter? All right, so he's gonna be a big party then, right?
Thank, thank you very much. Any, any, thank you, Mr. Vogel, for bringing that. I had no idea that that was taking place. Y'all kept that a secret. Okay, anything else?
I was joking when I said that, I was kinda joking that when I said, Mr. Malone, there are some vacancies. And I just wanted to kinda bring up, like, what are we going to do about the vacancies? Because it's been, it's been every meeting now that we've had to say, do you want to defer due to the amount of members present? So, I wanted to just kind of get everybody's input on that, if, if I could.
Yeah, so I haven't, that's the, as, to the best. that is a mayor's office thing, um, it is, um, we need 11, if we're gonna have to get six positive votes for a motion to pass, we need 11 commissioners, so, um, hopefully he'll, he'll get those appointments done, but thank you for bringing that up, that is a concern. Anything else? Uh, we stand adjourned, thank you very much.